Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Protown Forrester, my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, who is the telephone this morning, our attorney Jay Rubin, I would like to welcome everyone to our Wednesday, January 27, 2021 meeting. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead here.
Honorable Nanda Forrester.
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca.
Here.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Here.
Honorable Francis Funa.
Here.
Madam Mayor, have a call. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item number two, silent meditation. I would also, during silent meditation, ask that everyone keep the family of Hans Townsend, his daughter, friends and family, in your thoughts and prayers. We lost Towns last week. He passed away. So please join me at this time in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item number three, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Baca, would you complete us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands law, nation, under God, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item before, the approval of the agenda. This is the one that will make a motion to approve was presented.
Mr. Baca, one second.
I have a motion made. Sorry, can I ask a question before that? Let me, let me make a moment. Let me do this, and then you can ask, okay? I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and Secretary for Commissioner Baca. Are there any questions, comments or concerns? Commissioner Forrester.
If I have questions about the consent calendar E2, is that something that we need to pull out and have a discussion about? Or can I just ask my questions when we get to that?
Let's just pull it out, and then what we'll do is we'll discuss that. We'll approve the other two if so and discuss that one separately. So that's number E2?
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome. Are there any other questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Honorable Nanda Forrester.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Funa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item C, public comment. Are there any, is there anyone else in the go-to meeting that has public comments this morning? Please remember our three-minute rule. State your name and your address, and then we will have a timer set, and I will stop you at three minutes. Did see Mr. Dunia.
Yes, yes, mayor, that's correct. Mr. Dunia, I would like your public comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I, Mr. Dunia, said on 5th Charles Street, with the consequences. I'm currently seeking public apology from our city manager, Mr. Morris Madred, for a statement regarding my public comments that were made on January 13, 2021 to this commission. On January 13, during public comment, I asked for an update on the trash problem of Rotary Park. This is an issue I had brought forward before the city commission's attention at a previous meeting, and the city manager had stated he would look into the issue. I respectfully seeking an update on January in our last meetings, since I've seen no action has been taken at Rotary Parks. I continue to find cans, bottles, garbage and debris at Rotary Parks every morning during daily walks. Instead of an update, when the city manager responds to my public comments, he not only insulting me, but he calls into question my honesty and integrity, or accused me of lying to the city commission. Mr. Madred's statements, my public comments, were that I quote, "Just because I said something doesn't make it true," unquote. That statement was not only the mandatory, but Mr. Madred, in order to say that Rotary Park was in good shape was not during, there is no trash problem, nor is it a direct contradiction to what I was stating about the trash problem at Rotary Park. Mr. Madred's statement about me was very insulting and unprofessional, and he called into question my honesty and integrity. By making this definitive statement a part of public record, the city manager has caused me considerable harm and public humiliation. I respectfully impeach my call for a public apology from the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunia. Do you have any other?
I would like to. I would like to speak now.
Okay. Hold on just a second. Hold on just a second, Mr. Dunia. Okay, go ahead, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Diana Kittle. I live at 217 Austin in TRC, and I am speaking as the editor of the Sierra County Sun, and on behalf of the intent and chance of the open meeting act. Madam Mayor, I respectfully ask that you make sure that you, all city commissioners, the city manager, and other city officials and employees participating remotely in this and future meetings, turn on their cameras for the duration of the meeting. Government meetings are public so that constituents may see that elected representatives and government employees carry out the public's business. Having all cameras on will be especially important today as it will protect the rights of the three attendants who will come before this body to actually see the commissioners who will rule on their appeal. Furthermore, Madam Mayor, we do make sure that any officials who are in the chamber at unlight stations be required to come to the public comment microphone when they speak. This is especially important in the case of Attorney Rubin, whose opinions are often determinative of the way the commission carries out the public's business, but he can barely be heard by the others attending these meetings remotely. I respectfully ask, Madam Mayor, at the conclusion of the public comment session, will you instruct all city officials and employees in this meeting to make themselves seen and heard or explain to the public and the press why you are not willing to appear in front of the open meeting act? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunia. Is there anyone else out there that would like to give public comments at this time? I see caller number four.
Who's this?
Caller number five. Jennifer, she will talk. She wrote her address.
Can we be heard now?
Yes, you can be, we can hear you. Please identify.
Hi, folks, this is Kyle Smith and my neighbor Jennifer Dowd. And we just simply wanted to make a couple comments. Really, just one comment about the most recent utility bills for the whole town.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I know my utility bill went up over 300% as did most people I talked to. I know one person found out a bill that was under $400 last month, and this month it's over $3,000 with missing Michigan change and usage. And I was wondering, so what extent you all made aware of this? And just simply, what you're planning on doing? Do you have a way to collect information from the citizens about these? Kind of at this point, after everybody called the utility company and was told that nothing was wrong, I think we're just looking for somebody to agree that something is broken. Uh, we start from looking that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Snare.
This is Mr. Van, 316 North.
Hold on, hold on, just a second, Ron. Hey, go ahead, you're on.
All right. Recently, I submitted to the city an issue of false information and improper data collection on utility bills, especially electric bills, also those of water bills. And I received a very ridiculous reply from Mr. George Segetti of the PUAD saying that the fact that there were all these errors is justification for the $2 million smart meter system being put in. That this is going to answer all the questions. And obviously, since the meters have been put in, and the last caller telling you exactly what's going on, what would be, what I would like to know is, since I sent this to you, what is going to be done with the data collection and the billing procedures in the electric utility to make things reasonable, fair and understandable? I think most people do not do what I do, which is read my meters every single day. And so I know exactly how much electricity I'm using on a daily basis. I don't need a million-dollar program to tell me what I'm using. I already know. And this is very concerning because I have not received a updated bill from the city. And they shortchanged me by over 434 kilowatt-hours on my bill that I produced. They recorded as 41, and it was 434. And I have not received a corrected bill and it's been over 10 days. Now, I don't have to pay the bill because they owe me money, but I want proper information provided to me and to all citizens so that we can have some kind of confidence that we're not being unduly prejudiced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fan. Is there anyone else out there in the go-to meeting that would like to give public comments at this time? Seeing and hearing none.
Sandra Whitehead?
Yes.
Linda DiMino, on behalf of Main Street to the conference.
Thank you, Linda. Hold on just a second. Hold on. Okay, you're on, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to give a real quick update on some things that Main Street is working on. We are still in the process of the city brand development. We're collaborating with the Chamber, the Arts Council, John McClough Civic Byway, and several other representatives from different organizations and areas of the community to work on that branding process. We've created the logo. We're working on identifying markets and then developing a marketing plan and working on a rollout. Might not be right away, but I just wanted to let you know we still are working on it. Also, Main Street is working on a USDA grant that would allow us to help our local businesses, the Sierra County small businesses, to develop their e-commerce capabilities. So we're looking forward to that. That will be especially helpful moving forward for the businesses. And lastly, Main Street has received tentative funding for the boat scrape project from two different entities, New Mexico Main Street Capital Outlay and Department of Transportation. The one thing we're waiting on from the city, which I expect to see probably at the next meeting, is a resolution of support. And once that is in place, then it is more fun. So that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there anyone else in the go-to meeting that would like to give public comments at this time? Anyone else, please identify yourself. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to our next item on our agenda this morning, which is item D, response to public comment. Madam, it's time of the, is that any response to public comment?
I believe I sent you a letter yesterday from the school superintendent that we requested to be read as public comment. Oh, sorry, yeah, we have, we have a couple of them. Hold on just a second. Let me go back to public comment real quick. I apologize. Let me pull that up real quick. Do you have a printed copy? I don't. What I have? I do, it's right there. It says X to the. So I think that was part, yeah, it may be the item. And I think she's going to review that during that time.
Okay, hold on, hold, bear with me just a second, please.
Is this the one that was sent for public comment as a parent of two teenagers from?
No, that's not it.
Is it that one? Do you want me to read it out? I don't know.
Yeah, she will read it.
Francis Funa, who sent me the letter that we received yesterday via email. This is from Dr. Chanel Segura, the superintendent of the TRC School. Dear Mr. Madrid, it is with regret that I must write this letter to inform you of an issue that the truth and consequences municipal school district has encountered. We have always worked closely with the local city police department in facilitating the fingerprinting process for our background reports, which is required by both our district as well as the state's Public Education Department. Unfortunately, we have discovered that the city police department is no longer providing these services. The explanation given is that it is due to COVID-19 exposure. As a school district, we are considered an essential operation during the pandemic, and we are expected to keep staff at each site even during these difficult times. The integrity of our students' education as well as their safety is at risk if we are unable to get this important need met. This service is essential to the operation of the school district. Unfortunately, the closest establishment that provides the service is the Hatch Police Department. We do not feel this is a viable, permanent option moving forward and the need of services to be rendered locally. We are currently exploring other options, but in the meantime, we are in immediate need of this service. As a state public entity, we take pride in offering numerous services and partnering with local community establishments and organizations that do the same. We feel it is vital to have the needs of our community met from within our community. We feel we are not experiencing the same reciprocation from our local city police department, which we do not understand. Any assistance you can offer in this matter is very much appreciated. As always, we appreciate the continued effort you provide our community and schools.
Thank you, Commissioner Luna. We will make that email part of our record. At this time, are there any further public comments? Any further public comments? Hearing none, we will move on now to item D, which is response to public comments.
I'm sorry. Those in go-to meeting, if you are not speaking, can you please mute your mics? We're getting a lot of feedback on this, and thank you.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Aragon.
Camera issue? I thought we got cameras.
It is on. It's on.
So, where was talking right there? I'm missing a point. Is that unclarified?
Well, during our meetings, although we're not all, we do not all have our cameras on the go-to meeting. We do have our main camera that is focused on the commission up here at the front. So we are, we are following the open meetings act. We are visible through the go-to meeting. We are on the radio, being listened to. So I don't understand what is being requested here. At this time, I'll go, we can't have a debate on this. If you will give me a call when this is over and explain to me exactly what you're wanting and what you're wanting us to do, because we do have our main camera set on all of us up here.
So with the camera that's showing now, if they're on go-to meeting, they're seeing us, correct?
Yeah, I can see us right, I can hear us right here.
They have the video, if you call in.
Yeah, and also the radio show. It's on, it's on now, too.
It's on the radio, but it's not visible.
Not visible, right.
No, we can only be heard on the radio. We can't be seen on the radio.
The go-to, they can see if you connect to them.
We have Facebook.
And we heard, we got something else here. If the concern about the revenue stream running or stuff like that, and then with the $4,000, that's, that's the rule. We just, you know, go to the, but I know, um, Mr. Madrid, or someone really should work on that, correct?
And I would say that that's, that's the first place to start is to call the city utility and ask questions. Again, we don't need to be posting on Facebook if you've got an incorrect bill or an error in your, any type of bill that you're receiving. The first thing to do is call the utility department and set up a meeting and go to and have them explain to you why they're doing that.
And they go for three minutes, ten times that, or something.
And I've heard several people make those comments. So again, I will, I will look into this, and I will see what is going on, and I will ask questions.
Could you let us know the results?
I will.
We'll get a call.
I will.
And we got two more.
Go ahead.
The resolution for First Street, which is that revitalization, we need to move on that, I know.
Right, right.
And that's just a resolution to get the money.
Right, and I think we can work on getting that. If not, at the next meeting, the first meeting of February, we can do it on the second meeting. So we will, we will discuss that.
Last little thing, I'd like to call on that. That is.
The grant.
That's putting a clip on the school.
Yeah.
We got to get a grant.
Now.
By the way, it's not the Hatch PD. It's, they're sending, not Hatch PD, they're sending it to the Hatch School System.
Right.
For some reason, it's, kind of looks something else.
And I'm just going to say, in regards to that email, that I did read the email. I did visit with Mr. Madrid. And I was advised that we could make arrangements. So I don't know who they talked to, where they talked, or who they called, be it the school or the city. But I do know that as a city entity and as the PD, this is our job, and we need to take care of our essential workers. And so I alone, myself, when I read this email, I was very disappointed that this had not happened and this was not taken care of.
I talked to the lady at school, Ms. Kittle. She pointed, does a coronation, can replace, succeeded. Jenny, uh.
Make sure you're talking to her. Get up to the mic.
The PD, the PD is just telling them that they're not doing it.
Well, then, actually, I'm seeing that's not right. So again, that is another item that I will be looking into myself because I was real upset with this, that this was not taken care of because this is a priority.
Okay, good. Clear to me.
Madam Mayor.
Dear, this is Lawrence Schmidt.
Manager Madrid, go ahead.
There are a couple things. In regards to the utility bills, we have sent out notices because during the conversion of the AMI meters, some of the reading periods were shorter than normal. They could be anywhere 10 days, 20 days, 25 days. They're normally around 30. During the conversion, when the old meters were taken out, it was a short meeting. So people that got a higher bill could have got a lower bill the month before that. However, the notices have been sent out and we're still going out to let people know that's by the fluctuation occurring. That's the, and the fluctuations we're talking about in $3,000, $3,000 kilowatts in consumption. In regards to the utility bills, Mr. Goodman, my office still hasn't even received that yet. I understand that it was sent on Monday. I got a similar call from the SCAO in regards to very big fingerprinting, but it was a phone call, and it was resolved. And all they did was say, I asked them how many staff can be done and when they needed them, and we were in that. I'm thinking that it takes five minutes for a phone call, well, until the same 15 minutes writing the medical. I still have not received. But in any case, it's not an issue there. We would have resolved that in a matter of minutes and made arrangements to get the fingerprinting done. There was one particular day where the police department absolutely had to be closed for disinfection. When we have a positive case, not a probable case, we have to disinfect it so that not only to protect our own first responders, but the public in general. But there's not an issue. The police department is open right now for regular service. Our disinfection and our regular tests are being processed and looked at in operation. There's not an issue. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. Are there any further responses to public comments at this time? Commissioner Forrester.
Yeah, Jennifer is still writing. I don't know if everybody can see it, saying that there's the statement that Mr. Madrid made in a way makes sense to just the issue that goes around normally ahead. So Jennifer, I would just say, go down to the utility office and have, and show them your concern and get it fixed. Let them go re-read it or have a solution for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forrester. Are there any responses to, any more responses to public comments at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to our next item on our agenda this morning, which is item E, consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. Item E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of January 13, 2021. We have E2, Acknowledged Regular Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes for November 16, 2020. And we have E3, Subrecipient FY 2021 Second Quarter Reports. As stated in our earlier, the approval of the agenda, we are going to remove item E2 to discuss separately. So at this time, let's do items E1 and 3 on the consent calendar. Commissioner Luna, move to approve. One and three. Commissioner Forrester will second. I have a motion to approve consent calendar E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of January 13, 2021, and E3, Subrecipient Physical Year 2021 Second Quarter Reports. Are there any questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Honorable Francis Funa?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Yes.
Honorable Amanda Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we will go back and discuss, um, E2, which is Acknowledged Regular Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Commissioner McNeer, Pro Tim Forrester had a question.
Yeah, so I was just going over the minutes, and, um, it says that, um, members of the committee had recommend, recommended doing away with a ninety percent minutes to the homeowners and revising the six sixty-four ordinance. Um, my first question is, that has to do with, um, solar, and is my understanding, um, Mr. Segetti has, solar said that's something that he would have to abstain from voting for, and assuming. And then is, before that is passed, it can, would that be something that would come to the commission as a recommendation, or is that something that they can pass in the board directly?
Um, this is City Clerk Torres. So right now, they're still in the middle of trying to figure out what the recommendation is that they want to forward to the board. But when they do make a final recommendation, it will come to the commission, um, for final approval. They're just an advisory board, so they can't make any changes to our ordinances without your final approval.
Okay, yeah, that was my, my main question is, um, they're trying to increase their lot of amount, um, for solar users to have ninety percent of their total bill, I guess, moving that up. And my question would be, um, that I would want to answer before any of that even comes, is that the credit that we give them, they're wanting to put, from my understanding, they're wanting us, the city to pay out at the end of the year?
Mm-hmm.
Where do, do we get that paid from our, um, our Sierra Electric Bill? Do we get that reimbursed? Like, if we put mon, if we put electric back into the grid, do we get a reimbursement from them?
Um, City Manager Madrid, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, I do. The, um, the change that they're recommending does not incorporate a, a cash refund annually or anything, it just raises the limit. The credits are normally paid. Uh, I still, and I have to confirm this, when service is terminated, when the fund is closed.
Okay, um...
Not annually, but it, it is a cash payment.
Okay. That was, that's just a, that's concerning to me, um, financially wise. If we don't get that reimbursement, we're, we're giving them a credit, they're giving free electric from one, and then we're also giving them a payment at the end of their, whatever their account, and we are getting reimbursed for that. So we're paying them, not getting that money back either. So, um, just something we might want to look at.
And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, we will look at this information when it comes to us. The advisory board just kind of looks at things that, that we can work on and together and do. And then once, uh, they finalize everything they would like to do, then they present it again. Like, uh, Clerk Torres stated earlier, they present it to the board, and then we have a discussion with it. And also, uh, most of the time, we will have someone that will come in and present to us, and so that we can ask questions. Uh, again, we don't want to approve anything or, uh, acknowledge anything that we don't quite understand and that we need more explanation. Because again, like Mayor Pro Tim stated, um, you know, we don't want to just give free money and free electric to people. We want to make sure that, that everything is credited properly, correct?
Yes.
All right.
And, and the process is even more involved in that, because we're talking about a mandatory ordinance. So what has happened is that the PUA didn't make such a recommendation to you. He probably had been, um, instructed me to prepare a, an amendment, project that to you. Then you get a publication on it, if you get approved to go that way, and it comes back to our board on hearing, and we have a, a public, uh, public discussion. So there's still a lot to do on this.
Okay. I was just making sure, because I was, saw that, and I was making sure that they were not just gonna change it without us knowing about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now going back to E, uh, two on the consent calendar, Acknowledged Regular Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. So I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Forrester, motion. One second.
Sure.
I have a motion by Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Forrester, and a second by Commissioner Luna, to approve the acknowledgement of the Regular Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Madam Clerk, would you please call?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Vaca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Fentus Luna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F, New Business Discussion Action Public Appeals in Regard to Electric Smart Meters. We have three appeals this morning. The first one is Ron Finn, the second one is Ariel Dargery, and the third one is Lee Forrester. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Attorney Ruben, to expel, find the process.
Okay, first of all, before we start, this is Brad Gray, the comment section. Um, I, I'm comfortable sitting here, because actually I have my papers right out here, and I prefer it that way. But of course, I will do whatever the commission wants, wants me to do. Um, I was complimented to hear that someone couldn't hear me, because that's a person who ever been told that. But I, I mean, I, I prefer to stay here, but if anybody had a problem with that, then I will, you know, we can talk about that.
Can everyone here, Attorney Ruben, out and go to meeting? All right. At this time, uh, what we're going to do is, um, Ron Finn is the first person that has the appeal this morning. We are going to allow them, um, five minutes or ten minutes?
Well, I'll just talk about that a little bit. Uh, what we're talking about is, um, uh, an appeal, uh, as set forth in section fourteen dash thirty E of our code. Uh, if you want a copy, in fact, the little Mr. Finn's appeal, if you go up maybe about one quarter of the way down the paperwork, you see a copy of the statute, uh, a copy of the ordinance, excuse me. And, um, the, um, ordinance is not really given any guidance as to how the appeal is to be conducted. So it's really up to the commission how you wish to proceed. Uh, I guess my main point is, I really want to make sure that people are given due process and opportunity to be heard, and the commission has an opportunity to ask questions if they desire. Uh, so, um, um, what has already happened, as you can see from the paperwork, is that there was, uh, uh, concerns raised to the city manager, uh, the city manager and, uh, regardless of my city manager and myself, and also Mr. G, he denied the appeal at the administrative level. But with understanding, totally wait, and then support the appeal to the city commission, which is the fourteen dash three dash E, uh, contemplates, and now comes to you. Now, as far as the suit is concerned, I don't think that has really been terribly formal about this. I think we plan, I think it just give everybody a chance to be heard. So, um, I, I off the top of my head, I would say five minutes is satisfactory. The reason I'm saying that is because I do compliment the appellants for actually giving you live information all in your pocket. So presumably, we had an opportunity to review, uh, each of your appeals, and at least just know where the issues are. Uh, so I, I look at the five minute presentation, doing just a supplement of what they've already told you. That's how I see it. Um, if you have any suggestions, questions for me about how you want to proceed, uh, that's, um, you know, so here for it.
Thank you, Attorney Ruben. Uh, what is the wish of the commission? How would you, would we like to proceed with this?
Five minutes.
Five minutes on each person, that they would give their, their own, um, I would summary, and, and, um, let us know why they're appealing, and, and what the issue is, and then, um...
Yeah, I think a quick summary of the information they've already presented, because all three appellants have provided a healthy amount of information. Correct. Uh, Attorney Ruben, also, another question that I do have, uh, are we going to, uh, separately, or are we gonna take care of all three of them together? How is, what's the, what's your thought process on that?
Um, I would go on separately. Uh, and the reason why is because, uh, the grounds for their appeal are not exactly identical. Uh, I do note that if I'm too into appeal, there's health issues raised, but I think Mr. Finn, for example, here is the appeal, he actually raised a couple other issues.
Okay.
That were not raised by the other appellate. So I think I would go on separately. Um, that's, uh, anyway, that's my gut reaction to that.
Okay, so then do we hear, do we listen to all three and then go back, or do we listen to one and then, uh, uh, move on that one and then go to the next one? How, how, what if we listen to all three before?
All right. If the committee, I, again, there's no reason that we don't have that. The commission feels that here all right, that's fine.
I'm gonna go on.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Have all three appeals and then go.
All right.
Okay. All right. So at this time, um, I'm going to, um, ask Ron Finn, since he
is the first appellant on our list this morning, to go ahead and give your summary as to the information that you submitted in your appeal process. And at this time, we will allow you five minutes, and your time starts now.
My hand.
You need to unmute your mic. Ron, Ron, are you on? We can't hear you. Ron, you need to unmute your mic. It's unmuted, so we can't...
I agree.
I see that, it's unmuted. We can't hear you.
We can hear other guys, just forget to hit, probably on his phone. I can't hear Ron. I don't know what happened. Are you able to hear me?
Are we able to hear Ariel? Miss D, Miss Dargery, can you unmute your mic and let us see if we can hear you, please?
Can you hear me now?
I, I can hear you, we just can't hear Ron.
Madam Mayor, is it acceptable?
Okay, well, I, I, you can hear me because I'm on two different devices in order to be on this meeting.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, is it appropriate to, um, proceed with Miss Dargery's appeal, and then maybe have Mr. Finn figure out his technical difficulty?
I agree.
Another, another thing that Mr. Finn can do, if it's an issue with his computer, he can call in on his phone, and then do it that way, and then we will be able to hear the audio through that.
Okay. Mr. Finn, at this time, we were unable to hear you, so please look in to see why we cannot hear you. We heard you earlier when you were giving public comment, you were fine. So at this time, what we're gonna do is move on to Miss Dargery, to her appeal process and her summary, allow her five minutes, and if we still can't hear you when we come back to you, Ron, then we would like for you to call in on your cell phone so that we can hear you. Will that work? Okay. Miss Dargery?
Can't hear her now.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to discuss the merits of my appeal, requesting that since a smart meter is a health hazard for me, that it not be installed on my property. First off, I would like to see each one of you raise your hand and affirm that you uphold your oath of offer. Commissioner Vaca, can you start? I can barely see you all, so it's very hard to understand what you're all saying. Commissioner Vaca, can you raise your hand and affirm that you...
I, I don't think that's necessary. When they, when they took office, all of them were willing to do that, so that's not necessary at this point.
Well, I'm asking it to be done, but, okay, I'm gonna, okay. So, Mr. Ruben, are you in the room? I don't, I don't understand if you're in the room.
Yes, yes, he is in the room, he's sitting on his chair.
I, I have a desk here in the back of my unit, because that way I have all, I have paper right now.
Okay, okay. Okay, the other thing that I would like to know is, did any one of you five commissioners communicate with Robin Garrison, my disability rights advocate of Disability Rights New Mexico, who sent you each a letter on my behalf on January twelve? Uh, we will, would please respond to that question at the end of my presentation.
Madam Mayor, it's inappropriate, we need to hear her case, we don't need to be corresponding dialect with her, we need to hear her.
Miss D, Miss Dargery, all I need for you to do this morning is summarize your appeal process. We are not here to answer any questions, because we are not on trial. So please just give us your summary of why you're appealing, and, and go from there. Thank you.
Should I start or...
Oh, okay. I think that the, um, I, I think that Mr. Ruben, Mr. Madrid, and if we're both equally in the room, that you all are at a conflict of interest, because you signed off on my earlier appeal as a judge on the first appeal. Um, so also on the, on F1, we're also appealing individually. Our, um, appeals and reasons are, are different, and we're somewhat wrong together, um, here in this process, when our appeals are both individual and unique. Further, uh, so, also, on the agenda request form, um, for the you, you wish to zero, you wish to... Why, why aren't people talking?
I don't know.
Okay, what, you wish zero? Excuse me, I'm trying to make my presentation.
Oh, she's calling.
Uh, you, you wish zero physical impact is acknowledged on the agenda request form, and there is no reason the judge's waiver request threatens the city's budget in any way. So it is difficult for you to not accept my appeal. This acknowledged zero impact effort is not harming the city in any way, and mitigates against my, any hardship considered my claim and my appeal. While I'm glad to answer any questions any of you may have, I believe my conclusions on page five of my appeal eighty-four of the packet are succinct. One, for my health, which is already compromised and susceptible by almost five times to certain effect cancers, I request to minimize my RF exposure, which is cumulative. Two, due to existing smart meter exceptions, I seek you not to discriminate against my disability inheritance with the merits of disability to act. Three, I encourage you to approve my appeal as a remedy to the commission's violation of my due process rights in your abhorment of the New Mexico State Statute three fourteen eighteen, three dash fourteen dash eighteen from last year, exactly a year ago. Three of you are new to any of these longstanding issues before this commission, as you only took office in April or later than twenty twenty. I urge you to make this decision based on your independently informed investigation into these matters. Repeatedly, the city has emphasized how the smart meters are an asset for the city's electric department workers, but never in my observation have they ever once offered how they are a benefit to my welfare, which you are obliged to uphold. I contend they are not. Please accept this appeal for a waiver of installation of a smart meter on my property, which in all honesty is a minor request if the city already offers exceptions to these installations. Thus, I ask you respond to each of my points and writing. Respectfully, I ask that these comments be added to the city's record and catch the verant to believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Dargery. We will now go back to, uh, Mr. Finn. Ron, are you back?
I can't hear you. Can you call it on?
Ron, can you, can you call us? We still can't hear, we still can't hear you.
Is Mr. Forrester on?
Mr. Forrester, are you on?
Uh-uh. I don't see Mr. Forrester. Call, call Ron and let him know that we can't hear you.
Mr. Finn, if you can hear us, we're gonna call your cell phone, so we can try to get through.
He was not even on anymore.
I know, but he was on it, so try to...
He's got his mic, he's got his microphone.
He's on.
Let me email him real quick and see.
I don't know where he is.
He's not on.
Mr. Forrester's not there either.
I'm calling this, I'm calling this right line. This other phone.
Oh, Ron's line, line.
He's got a cell phone, a line, a wifi.
It's cheap, yeah, we're trying to get you to call in.
Can you just put it on speaker, and then just put it to your mic?
Okay, good. I, I'm gonna give my cell phone to the lab, so hold on. Now, who got to pick up, uh, you got a speaker?
Okay. Ron, Ron?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Well, I don't know, I don't understand what's going on with your, with your system here, but I know one thing, I cannot see you. I can only see, um, somebody that looks like they're a hundred miles away. Um, this is, this is not a proper, um, hearing. Okay. I, I object to, I object to Mr., um, Mr. Morris and, uh, Mr. Ruben being present for this, as they have already denied a, an appeal, and the only thing that they can offer here is, uh, undue influence on this board, um, to reject my appeal. Okay. Um, I have, I have asked for this, you know, I have been, I have been harmed and abused already by the city in this, in this regard, and I am appealing under a number of issues. And I, again, I would like to have written explanation, written explanation for each of these. No, what's going on? You're hanging up on me?
No, hang up, go ahead, we're listening.
Well, I'm hearing somebody dialing over me.
Yes, sir, we're dropping you.
Please enter your access code, followed by the...
If you'd like to wait just one second, we'll call you fine.
Can you leave the audio control? Please enter your...
Okay, Mr. Finn, go ahead.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me try this.
Yes, sir.
I think it's his system, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not on this side.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Tell him to unmute his computer and see if it'll work now.
Ron, Ron, unmute your computer and see if we can hear you now. No.
No. So continue to talk into the phone, we've got you on the phone.
Randall's phone is a good speaker.
Want me to try to call him on mine?
Mr. Finn, we're gonna hang up, and we're gonna call you from a different phone, so it will play... it will play louder for everyone. We'll, we'll call you right, right back. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
What's the number?
Technical difficulty?
Eight nine four fifteen forty-three. I got it.
Or you're gonna call-
It doesn't matter, go ahead.
Hello?
Okay, now we can hear you better. Okay, you're on.
Okay. Now, now I hear myself, uh, myself, uh- No, this is not, this is not-
Mr. Finn, turn the computer down on your phone, or on your computer. Turn all the, the volume all the way down on your computer and let it back some stuff. Hey.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay. Um, I have shut off your audio. Let me go back to, here I am, okay. Okay. All right. Let's begin again. I am objecting to the presence of, uh, Mr. Morris Madrid and Jay Rubin, Attorney J. Rubin, uh, present in this, in this appeal, as they have already heard an appeal and rejected it. Therefore, their presence can only adversely influence through their body language or notes or whatever else is going on, uh, the decision of this board. I have been, I have been harmed already by the city. I've had my power shut off for one week unnecessarily. Um, and as I had appealed in advance of the shut off, and in, in the period of time that I was supposed to submit an appeal, which of course there was no guidance for. So, we're all flying by the seat of our pants here, and I, this is, this is one heck of a way to run a railroad. Okay? You are, you are supposed to be representing the people. You are supposed to be looking out for the care and welfare of the people of the city of truth and consequences and not to benefit the employees of the city of truth and consequences. That is not the point of government. Um, I'm appealing this on the basis of, um, special mutual benefit and request an exemption from the installation of a smart meter on my property. As a private solar producer, having made substantial investment in my property and benefits both myself and the city, you are currently selling my excess power to my neighbors. It has nothing to do with Sierra Electric Co-op. You're just not buying the amount of production that I have, you are not buying from Sierra. So, um, Ms. Forrester, you're incorrect in assuming that the city is gonna be out something. No, they're benefiting by selling my power currently and not paying you for it.
Ron, Ron, excuse, Ron, excuse me a minute. I would like for you to give us a summary of why you do not want the smart meter on your property. Not your, your dislike because this is happening and that's happening. Why are you protesting a smart meter? Summarize what you gave us in your protest packet.
My protest packet, have, have, let me ask, have you all read the, the almost ninety pages of documentation that I provided you with? And summarizing it in five minutes, uh, is, is rather ludicrous and, uh, I know-
Well, you don't have a minute to answer.
Of my rights to be heard and to be cross, to cross-examine the people who are gonna make the decision on me. I'm, I'm appealing this on the basis of pending litigation, which could be harmed by my taking smart meters. Unfortunately, only two of you are responsible for the pending litigation, and so I'm, I'm hoping that the three of you who are not involved in this pending litigation now would, would reject this or, or accept my, uh, appeal to keep yourself out of it. Otherwise, you will be involved in this litigation. Okay? Secondly, there's, there's a, on the basis of my health, potential damage to my health, I have explained that, you know, I have had cancer and that the smart meters have been shown, whether you've looked at the data or not, whether you just wanna accept what the FCC says, instead of looking at the peer-reviewed studies by thousands of people and thousands of scientists and doctors that have said that there is harm from these, um, from these meters. Um, I'm appealing because there has been no due process. There is, there is nothing-
All right, Ron, your, your five minutes is up. Sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have the next, uh, the next appeals is, uh, Lee Forrester. Lee, Lee, are you on? Lee Forrester, are you on this morning for your appeals? I don't see a Lee Forrester on here. Attorney Rubin?
Well, um, I don't know. What are you, what are you showing? Is he off or what's-
He's not even on. I don't, I don't even see a Lee Forrester on here.
He didn't call in, but his, um, appeal was submitted into the packet. I don't know if you guys wanna just consider it that way?
Okay, so, well, if, if that's the pleasure of the commission, we'll, uh, consider his appeal that was submitted through the packet, as we will all the others. Um, all right, Attorney Rubin, how do we proceed at this time?
Well, I think you just vote, well, no, I think we can discuss it first, um, and, um, you may have questions, for example, not only just of, uh, of Mr. Rubin or Mr. Finn, but also maybe a question for Ida and myself, Mr. Easley or Mr. Madrid. And that's one reason why we wanted to accuse ourselves, we're not a court of law here, and, uh, you may have questions of the reasons for that, for example, why Mr. Madrid or Mr. Easley felt appropriate to deny the peer-reviewed review of the bill, so that's why you're present.
Okay, uh-
I feel we should hear that.
Manager Madrid? Are you still with us?
Get here.
Are you still with us?
Still with him, yeah. Yes, man?
And, uh, we did have, uh, two appeals that came forward. We had Ron Finn, which we did have trouble hearing, so we had him call in or we called him. And then we had Ariel Dardary that, that was able to give her summary. Lee Forrester did not come on the line to give a summary on his appeal. We will go ahead and consider his packet that was submitted. Now, at this time, um, and both easily, if you're out there, um, in go-to meeting, uh, you can chime in at any time because these questions would be directed at the both of you. Could you give us your summary as to why, um, you felt that, uh, that we would deny the appeals?
The commissioners, uh, this is, to the manager of it, this is a very simple petition. These issues have been raised before this process took, uh, years. The, uh, the basis for my rejection is simple. There are two, uh, things. Uh, the one that is raised was that, uh, this is discriminatory, discriminatory nature. That is not true. We are not making objections for anyone that has a technical capability. There may be a few issues that whose systems are so outdated, they're not capable of handling the smart meters. That would be a major burden on the homeowners, and for those cases, we're not converted. There is very few of those. The other one is the health concern. Uh, the Federal Communications Commission could be a device that they might be using. But we are in place in millions of homes throughout the country and, uh, are not built to be a health hazard. That's the basis of my rejection.
Thank you. Uh, may I approach him first with the questions?
Manager Madrid, I have a quick question. Um, and it's more pertaining against Julie Forrester. Um, is he denying just solely on his personal property or his business as well, or is his business not applicable to have a smart meter there?
I'm gonna refer that to both. Um, you're more in there, we're both team, Mr. Boy, we, um, Mr. Forrester is rejecting one of his property. Um, the business has been installed and actually his son runs his business now and everything. I'll answer his question.
That does, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Uh, though the manager said that, uh, there's some homes that are so outdated, how many ballpark is that number? What is that number?
Okay, so on the residential side, all the meters have, have been probably ninety-five, ninety-six percent installed. The residential side is, is some of the ones that we're having problems with, we're having to update meter can for the meter, the new meter to install into the new, new meter can. And we are working on them, but all the residential has probably been ninety-eight percent done.
So when you say we replace those meter cans, is that an expense to the homeowner or to the city of T R C?
The city of, uh, T R C, I mean, they are just businesses, they're not residential. All the residential meters have been changed out.
Okay, so what was the-
There ain't no meter cans or meter-
For the business. So what is the manager referring to in that it, some have not been changed out and, because it would be burdensome to the customer? What is that reference?
Uh, he's, I, I, yeah, I think he's referencing, referencing the commercial.
Yes.
Yes, the commercial side. Okay, so we are having to go out and hand-read those meters?
The commercial is not until we get them switched over, which we should be done by, I would say, within the next month.
So what percentage is that? How many?
I would say probably, probably fifty-two percent.
So we're talking less than half a day?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor? It bothers me that we expected a hundred percent compliance with this. I think that people, we live in a free world and we have the right for choices, but I feel like those choices should come at a cost. So if we're going to have to send someone out to go and read these meters, I think it's appropriate that that come, that choice to remain with their old meter and have someone taken away from another task to go read that meter and enter that information be at that customer's cost. If they're, if it's that concerning to them and they wish to do that, let's, let them make that choice, as we all want the choice to have a vaccine or not have a vaccine. Send our kids to public school, homeschool them. We want choices in our lives. That's why there's scores with hundreds of choices. I have five minutes picking my shampoo. I want the nice shampoo it costs me. So let it cost these customers. I spoke to, uh, Denise at Sierra Electric. They are charging fifty dollars for a read, a special read. So why can we not give the customers who want to stay with their original meter the option to do so and let them pay for the cost that the, the city is going to encumber because of that? I don't think that's unreasonable on the city's part, and I don't, I think that helps those customers who have their health concerns, let them take care of themselves. That's my two cents. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Lena. Lena, approach him.
Uh, uh, Manager Madrid, I bow this night before you guys. At one point in time, do you see us not having a meter reader at all because everybody will have a, a smart meter?
We should know, uh, we still have to read the water meters. The reading of the electric meters, uh, if we got a hundred percent conversion, it'll go away, but we still have to read the water meters.
Okay, so if we went with something that Commissioner is suggesting, um, that would be, that would fit, because we would already have somebody going out?
It's, um, it's possible to do, and, but it is, Brezich.
Thanks, Manager Madrid.
This came up.
Sure.
Uh, I got a, uh, P M B, about on whether to pay the extra money. It's kind of close. Um, there's merit to it, Commissioner, and so, uh, we're not talking about a whole lot of people. Uh, they're so adamant with every studies and stuff, but, you know, I just know this, we're above legalization, you know, and there's best things we've been listening to, it's, and we can fill out all kinds of studies, so, you know, it's just a point we can talk to, but the thing is, fifty dollars or whatever, uh, there's a cost with the really want that and you don't have to do that. There is some answer to that, and it's not a whole lot. I know that with the meter system, the smart meters, it answers a lot of questions and harder questions because they're sending that, uh, the city data all the way along. So they're gonna use that on that, but it's worth fifty dollars. Uh, so, yeah, it's my feelings.
Attorney Rubin, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions, but I, I expect I get one option you have. You don't necessarily have to rule on this today either, you know? If you wish to have a staff do some research on the questions you're raising, uh, that's something you can do. I, I don't know where the suggestions that you're making, whether it's the best feasible or not, I don't know.
Thank you, and I like that idea of, uh, you know, going back and listening to the summaries that were given today, um, go back and review, um, all these appeals one more time, um, maybe ask questions, um, maybe find out, you know, how things are going doing this. Um, that's just my thought and idea, but, um, you know, again, we, the, the commissioner, whatever's the favor of the commissioner.
Yeah, uh, this has been going on a long time. We've been thinking this for a while. We need to do something. Uh, we've concerned with, uh, with citizens, with some that, that I think we need to look at.
Okay. Sounds good to me, so. Do you have something? Commissioner Baca, do you have a question?
I don't, actually. Um, I have a, one more question. When, um, Sierra Electric did put in more meters, they didn't, we didn't get a choice. Um, I don't know what Denise is referring to on that, um, but I, they didn't ask me, I didn't get the choice, they just installed it. Um, so I personally would like to find out and talk with, um, Manager Mabell Utilities or whoever and find out if charging a fifty dollar, um, whatever, to the bill every month is going to suffice sending somebody out there to read that meter month for you. Other than that, that's what I would like to know.
Well, uh, uh, but, uh, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're-
It's a trick charge, is it?
Okay, I, I think this, uh, we just need to, we need to, we need to separate this, uh, debate. It's been going on a long time, we've got other things to do, uh, we're going with this movement, and, uh, we'll, we'll figure it out later, but we're running a little bit of a, but it's really good.
Madam Mayor, may I approach him? Um, I think we all know that our meter readers don't make fifty dollars an hour. Um, so I think if we're making a hundred and fifty dollars a month to go read thirty meters, I think that would more than, I, I mean, and the manager and Mr. Easley are on the phone, I think we can ask them that right now. I agree that let's, let's get this done, like, let's put this drama behind us and move on. And I think we could very easily set a precedence here, that if you don't want the smart meter, here's the process. And now there is a process, um, so maybe- Um, so maybe one day the water meter reader guy goes around and reads three meters while he's in the neighborhood. Or maybe those three meters are read while they're checking the water. But I, I don't see why, I mean, we can't make an accommodation, let them have the option, let them pay for that option and move on.
I have to go with you a hundred percent. At first I was more of a, nobody has an option. I didn't get an option with a call off like you did. But I, I could if they wanted an option, okay, that's how it is everywhere else.
Can you play the pointer? It's gonna bound up, so we fix it or not.
We gotta fix it.
And, um, I am seeing some comments here and it says, in my tower is a visual of my electric meter that I could provide every month. I don't want to get off on that. You can read your own meter and we're gonna deal with that. Um, that's either smart meters to mean nothing or paying the chip charge of fifty bucks for somebody to come out and read it. Um, and I think that's maybe something that we could read this up. Like, if, like you said, if that's, um, whether or not it needs to go or not.
So Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, um, we set a charge, a trip charge for those who do not wish to have the smart meters installed. And that be the fifty dollars per month. And that would cover, um, the city going and manually reading those meters. And that be the precedence and the process for which anyone who does not want a smart meter can then follow.
Just one more second.
But, Mayor, this is more for you.
Go ahead, Manager Madrid.
It's, it's, when you continue on that, there was a language in that that's for anyone that does not want a smart meter. There is a timeline for an appeal process, but which that is run out to most people. So that would completely be ordinance that says that there is a time, uh, a timeline to appeal. Uh, I think this could apply to people that have filed an appeal on time basis or still are in that window. Because someone that had their meter installed and not over has clearly gone beyond the window of appeal. But I think that means to be careful. In regard to the fifty dollars, that is close to, uh, right within the range that the Public Community Advisory Board discussed two months ago. And they recommended no exceptions. They did have a discussion on the, on the reading fee and they recommended forty-five, fifty dollars if there were the fee. So I just wanted to, uh, turn the interruption before you complexion. We need to aware of that and get the opinion on that.
Thank you. Attorney Ruben, do you have any comments on?
Look, do, do we agree, well, you know, I, okay, I got a timer and I did, I wasn't aware really. We had to discuss that, uh, this, but do we, do we agree that three people that are being helped today, were they timely filed? I, I assume they were because that's when we're trying to install the meters.
Well, I'm assuming that they were.
Yes, okay, so I think, I mean, they were filed finally. Okay, so I think really you can agree with the motion with the understanding that any appeal that's filed has to be done at a time of now. Okay.
Madam Mayor, well, we have a motion on the table, sorry. The ordinance that I am reading says, appeal. Any person disputing a disconnect notice or other action related to utility service will be provided reasonable opportunity to appeal within the department then to the city manager. And if dissatisfied with the manager's decision, the city commission an ordinance with the written procedures established by the electric department. I'm not seeing a ninety day notice, a ninety day timeframe within that appeal.
I guess you're saying the ones that have, they've already been, have smart meters in.
Okay, but, but to the point, if someone leaves, that meter is pulled, we put in a smart meter, it resets the clock. What I'm trying to do is not have another appeal, have a process. So if someone does not want this in their house in twenty years or fifteen years when we still have smart meters and we're not, none of us are sitting here, there is a process. We don't have to be dealing with this. We're smarter, not harder. Right. So I, I don't, I mean, I don't want it to just limit it to the three. I'm trying to solve the problem for the three people we have on our agenda today and in the future. Mr. Madrid, is there, where is the ninety day language that you're referring?
I'm sorry, it wasn't, uh, ninety days. I thought you, your period was fourteen days. That was a citation in, uh, Mr. Finn's, his short term.
Okay, what is that in the ordinance that we're looking at?
This one, shaking.
I don't see a timeframe with the ordinance to appeal, I guess is what I would read it differently.
Yeah, I, I don't have it in front of me, uh, that was, uh-
It's page one-
I'm gonna have to dig up on that one.
Page one oh nine and one ten of the commission packet is the ordinance.
I'm, I'm thinking the fourteen days, I think, but I know more about, I think the fourteen days actually, when we first heard from, uh, these three apples, I think we told them they had actually submitted a formal appeal in fourteen days. Is that anyway what was going on? Um, just, we just thought it was a primary-
I see that, Mr. Ruben, I see that in the letter to Mr. Finn, but within this ordinance pertaining to meters, that doesn't, I could go back and now appeal this if I'm willing to pay the fifty dollars and begin the process. That's why I made my motion the way I did. So my motion stands and I'll call for a vote.
Commissioner, what's up?
Okay, I have a, I have a motion, uh, noted by Commissioner Luna, second to the-
Yeah, Mitch.
By Commissioner, uh, Aragon. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns by the commission?
So the way we have it is if somebody already has a smart meter in and they want to appeal the process and pay the fifty dollars a month, they can do so.
That is the way my motion is.
Okay.
That, there is no time frame within the ordinance to appeal. Regardless of this letter, this letter is a dated document with address to one person. It's not part of the rule that we are supposed to follow. I have a motion on the floor, um, very noted, questions, comments, or concerns. Madam Clark, would you please call roll? Honorable Ramon Aragon? Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Nama Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Sanor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Now that is understood that those three, uh, people that currently appealed, um, the smart meters, that they can go ahead and continue with their old meters and be assessed a fifty dollar, uh, per, per month fee for going to your house to, um, read your meters. All right, moving on, thank you all. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F two, discussion action, community development block grant, C D B G project selection. Tracy Alvarez, grant projects coordinator and zone official and, and city manager, Madrid. Tracy and Manager Madrid, you are on.
Ladies and commissioners, this is one of your processes that, uh, I described generally in, in my last manager's report in conducting public hearings and asking the commission if there were any particular projects to be brought forward. Today at this meeting, I will clear over to Tracy, Conchic, and, uh, in the little detail about the C D B G process, C D B G is community development block grant, and the eligible types of projects that, that, uh, to be put forward for application. Very appreciate you.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pacheco and Commissioner. Um, actually, with the talk here with the commission at this time, I'm going to come, uh, mic over to Tiffany Goldstein, who's with our local South Central Council of Government as they assist us in the C D B G. Uh, C D B G grants are, uh, very meticulous in the processes that we have to follow, both through application during the application and during project. Uh, Tiffany, are you available to develop and support your mission?
Good morning, yes, I'm available. Um, good morning, we are members of the commission, uh, community. I'm with the South Central Council of Government. And as Tracy mentioned, uh, the C D B G access is, um, is quickly held. It involves, um, requirements for it means to have a series of public hearings to get public input. And then to choose a project and a regular scheduled meeting. But it has met the requirements for opening up free selection, public hearing meetings. And in terms of eligible projects, is there, uh, uh, there are, uh, there are three different national objectives that can be met, um, once, one has to be met of each project. And in Mexico, New Mexico really looks at, um, projects that benefit low and moderate income level. Projects that are eligible include projects such as, um, infrastructure, infrastructure and prisons, like road, street, sewer, um, community facilities. Um, types of projects that are not eligible are projects that improve, um, facilities where local government conducts a business, like a city hall, even for counties. Um, and that, there are those projects in, improve A V A compliance. And there's a maximum amount that you can apply for, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with certified and main confidence. Um, there is the maximum amount to apply for for infrastructure projects is five hundred thousand. And same ones are also eligible, um, to use them by spending banks for up to fifty thousand dollars. They're matching final requirement, um, working strategy for non-oral communities that they will treat as a public authority, there is a ten percent local cash match on them. Is there any specific questions that you have to contribute to?
Thank you, or do we have any questions? No, not at this time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do have, um, I do have, Tracy, I do have a couple of emails here that were received regarding the item F two, the C D B G block grant. I'm gonna go ahead and just read them for, for the record. Um, this one is from, uh, Dr. Sanel Sabuda. As a parent of two teenagers and a school parent of twelve, uh, twelve hundred students, I would love to have a recreation center with a swimming pool, workout facility, ice skating rink, food concession for our students to have something to do to increase their physical and mental health. I know it is a lot to ask for, but just want to put it out there, thank you. Um, so this was from the superintendent of the school, which, you know, again, um, we, we continue to look, um, at a recreation area, not only for our students, but also for our elder community, um, that would like to use this. Uh, the second email that I have that I will read, um, is from Sofia Peron. Um, this was dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, to Tracy Alvarez. Regarding C D B G proposal for T R C Riverside City Yard Multiple Generational Recreation Center, no swimming pool proposal. Uh, one, cleanup property and buildings, uh, poisoning our watershed daily for decades. We use, uh, three plus buildings for our indoor sports and activities like admit and shuffleboard, ping pong, pool tables, et cetera. Number two, the outdoor staging area can be restored for a year round farmer's market and other activities. Number three, the site is very handicap friendly and accessible. And number four, our little town is barely five thousand people, it is affordable. And she's also attached pictures as well as the email for anyone to read. Um, I just would like those to be part of the, of our, of our minutes. Manager Madrid, do you have any questions, comments?
Hello, ladies and commissioners, uh, we did not receive, uh, public comment during the hearings that were held. However, uh, you do, you should have in front of you bring potential project options, uh, including the drying desert, the wastewater treatment plant, water line replacement, and a new well. If there are any other recommendations from any of the commissioners, uh, now would be the time to discuss them.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a question slash comment.
Here.
Um, I'm looking at the, the page that the public input gave on email or, uh, the Facebook page. So just want to tell everybody, thank you for participating in that. We had a few high school students, um, give their recommendations also. So it's really nice to see the youth coming and, um, giving their opinions on what they would like to see in their town as well. Um, and Manager Madrid, would these, um, take into consideration on the, on anything that you put on to the potential twenty twenty-one, uh, C D B G project options page that you had that out?
Uh, Commissioner, glad you mentioned that because the most support that we've been receiving for a project is our new, uh, pool slash recreation facility. This, uh, has the most community support, I think. But this, because of the space that we're in, would probably not be considered an eligible project uh, because, uh, number one, uh, to fund the project like this is a community project. We are afraid that all other funding documents be approved and in hand. So the project would have to be fully funded for then to contribute to the project. Uh, it could be a test phase by this time next year. However, this year, that's not a viable project for C D B G. Uh, it, it was considered, not considered eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time? Madam Mayor, do we need to prioritize these or approve all of them or pick one? Tracy, what is your recommendation on this, to approve all, pick one, or prioritize?
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pacheco, Mr., sorry, my phone acted up and I lost volume for a little bit. Um, we do need to select a project today. Uh, the, the project selection could come at the commission level off of these three or off of any of the public input. Uh, we do have, uh, Jesse, our water waste water director, is available as well as Alfredo with Water Swimming Company. If you guys have any questions regarding the projects the staff is recommending as far as what, you know, the priority is from their department.
Did, uh, Ms. Tracy, did you list these in a priority order or did you just list them randomly? And how, how do you feel about the priorities on here? What is, what is most viable at this time?
I didn't list them in any particular order. And, uh, as far as, I, I think all three of them are extremely high importance and they do all fall under public input for improving our, our water infrastructure. Uh, Jesse, um, are you available to jump in with your priority as well as Alfredo? Um.
I am here, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this is Jesse. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm available.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, what, uh, what would be your priorities here? What, what is the most critical at this point, um, that we need to kind of work with?
So as far as from a critical standpoint goes, the northern groundwater would be the most beneficial of the three. Um, it is unfortunately the highest cost of the three as well. Um, so, I mean, it comes with a cost associated, um. That, that is my personal opinion on that.
Can you give us a little summary as to why you feel this is the most important at this time?
Um, yes, I can. Um, so with a northern groundwater well, we would be able to fill the upper zone tanks independently from, uh, Cook Street booster station. Um, so we could potentially, um, if we were to have something go wrong with Cook Street or with, uh, water wells out here on the southern portion of town, um, then this new water well would be able to still provide water, um, to the upper zone, which is the highest elevation, um, and would be able to provide water to, uh, the full city wide. highest elevation, um, and would be able to provide water to, uh, the whole city wide. Um, so it would be a redundancy in the water system and it would provide a backbone, um, to our system in case of any unforeseen failures or, um, anything of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Mayor Pacheco?
Jesse, I have a quick question. Um, on our paper, it also has the water line replacement. Um, if we add a new valve, is it going to be running through old water lines? Or is, or is that something that has already been fixed and this is a different water line replacement we're looking at? In my mind, I think, oh, we need to replace the water lines before we put something else. But you're the expert on this, if you would not mind.
Uh, and that is a, that is a good point to bring up. Um, but at this point, if we don't have any water to fit in the line, it doesn't matter to you, is my thought process. Um, so that, that's where the redundancy, um, comes into play before we, and we are focusing on water lines on several other projects. Um, so we are actively participating in getting those upgraded as well. Um, so this would be, um, an addition to the water line that we are currently looking at upgrading, partly in the MSD, um, project that is, uh, Main Street. Um, water lines that are going to be replaced, um, and that's also going to include the, uh, there's five roads that we're planning on replacing water lines on as well. Um, and then there's a couple of other projects that we've been looking at. So we are actively participating in both projects. Um, and this would help us get to that, that level of confidence, um, in the water system that would be, um, most beneficial.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Madam Mayor, I have a final question. Um, it says applications are limited to a maximum of 500,000 without certified cost estimates and 750,000 with certified cost estimates by a licensed professional. The two that are being pitched the hardest are 824 and 1.8 million, um, both which exceed the application, um, maximum with the certified cost estimates. So my question is, where are we getting the money to fund the rest? Who found the forest of money trees? And why don't we know about it?
Manager Madrid, can you?
Mayor, Commissioners? Yes, yes, I can answer that. In regard to the water line replacement, uh, as she said, the, uh, maximum is 750,000. In, in this particular case, we can scale back the quantities to, uh, keep the funding despite reducing the millions of feet of water line that we've been replacing. So that one is, is not very complicated. The other one, we would have to have, uh, we would have to find funding for anything in excess of 750. Also, we would have to, uh, come up with a match, uh, for the 750,000, about 2%. So this one is the most desirable, but it is the most costly and we have not yet identified this funding.
Would that be something the cog would help us out with? And finding, funding for that?
Hey, I'm, uh, Commissioner, I can answer that. Uh, yes, the cog is extremely helpful in assisting us with other funding sources. Um, and then we also pair in with funding sources that we're already applying for, uh, like when we did the MSD water project, we got the USDA funding for the water lines. So then we reached out to Colonius for the streets and we were able to say, hey, we already have this funding for this portion. Can you bring us in funding in the other? So it's a matter of trying to combine funds, but none of it is necessarily a guarantee, nor does it always work within the timelines. But it, it does help if you've already allocated funding, um, from one site. And as far as the water line replacement goes, uh, these are water lines that are identified in our PBRs. Uh, we have the full municipal water PBR that is, uh, being worked on and finalized. And then we have two smaller water PBRs that are, uh, being worked on for specific grant projects through USDA. Um, so we might be able to pair some of that money with USDA as well, but there are no guarantees.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, Mayor, just listen to Jesse, she looks like quite grounded well, you know, top of the list. But of course, it's about a million dollars short. And really, uh, I agree with Jesse, you know, if you don't have the water, it doesn't matter about how long the, the pipes are. So is there, is there some kind of deadline you're working on? And we could see that we can get these extra funds, money from the state, legislature, or as cog, or whoever can come back and decide?
Tracy, or Manager Madrid, can you answer that question? Is there a, a timeline at this point in time to approve these, one or the other?
Yes, we can, I'm going to make a little selection. Go ahead.
All right, I was just going to turn that over to Tiffany with the cog. I wasn't sure if she's got specific dates yet for this CDBG.
Thank you, Tiffany. Mayor, Mayor, Commissioner. As of right now, the deadlines for 2021 have not been released by P R S. So we are using the 2020 as a rough guide. Um, in 2020, the application would move on June 11. Far as to that, there are two important deadlines to consider, um, in order to, to show that the community, and that the project needs those of moderate income requirements. Um, if you know, if you can activate some money and go to the state, um, provide a state. So last year, uh, the first time I went into the program, she explained the project and what real recovery was, uh, eligible to be, uh, specifically, uh, one would have to do a few things. And in either case, uh, the data calculating, uh, the low moderate income requirement would be below. So it's beneficial to treat the project sooner in order to make sure that you need the other two guidelines. And in terms of the capital, I don't think we're able to execute any additional funding, but it will need to be secured either through the CDBG application.
Thank you, Tiffany. Madam Mayor, with what Tiffany just said, um, I think if we had the million dollars in hand that we are short for the northern groundwater well, that would have been presented as part of the presentation and not an afterthought in the presentation. So I would propose that we scale back the water line replacement. I think that's to the point, do you buy the cart before the horse, the horse before the cart? You need both of them to go forward, period. Um, we all know our infrastructure is failing and I think that that still shows the public that we're responsive to their comments and we are making improvements. And we can do that within the C B G, C D B G grant money that is available. And I think we can go forth and knock something out. I'll write that in the form of a motion.
And I will start it. I have a motion made by, uh, Commissioner Luna and seconded by Mayor Pacheco, Dorster. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Carrie, Madam Clark, would you please call her?
Honorable Senator, yes.
Honorable Paul Vaca?
Yes.
Honorable Madam Forster?
Hi.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Hi.
Honorable Ramon Erga? Motion carries. Thank you. Before we go on to our next item on the agenda, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you so much. Item F three, discussion upgrade second quarter revenue and expenditures. Carol Patrick, Finance Director, and Manager Madrid. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pacheco, and Commissioners. Can you give me your opinion? What's your?
Good people, opportunity to present our thoroughly expenditures and revenues to you. My name's Carol Patrick, I'm the Finance Director. Um, it's been a long time coming. It's, uh, I've been here a little over a year and so it's taken me a little bit to get all the revenues and expenditures sorted out by funds. As you know, I'm used to school finances, which is city finances, it's a whole lot different. So if you have questions as we go, please feel free to ask me. I eat, sleep, and drink this every day, so it makes sense to me. It may not be you. So if you have any questions, either I or Mr. Madrid can try to answer them for you. So the purpose of this presentation is to present you the second quarter revenues and expenditures for the fiscal years of 2017, 18, 19, and 20. And because we have a fiscal calendar year of July through December, through June, excuse me, this would be our second quarters. We're going to review the following, the sources of general fund revenues for municipality, review and compare revenue and expenditures for all funds for the months of July through December, second quarter, to see if there either has increased, decreased, or is approximately the same, and to see any trends. We're going to review major expenditures for our funds, focusing on general and enterprise funds specifically. You all have been given a notebook. I hopefully I have tabs in there for you. Sometimes I was in such a hurry to get it out, I didn't get it quite organized the way I wanted to. Okay, and there's going to be handouts for each section that I'm referring you to and I've numbered your tabs, so one, two, three, based on the handout. And I hope you guys received these before today, right? Yes, thank you, Ms. Angel. All right, to, um, get started, I would like you to fill out this first presentation. It's called municipal revenue sources in New Mexico. I'd like to say that I come from an education background, and so I'm reading the forwards, backwards, where all the funding came from. With the city municipality, it's quite a bit different. We have a municipal revenue sources with grocery receipts tax. In a school district, it's a little bit different, it's abnormal, and we get a funding formula, but you don't need to know all that business right now. All right, so the first part of the revenue, uh, our municipal revenues distribution from the state. Our largest source of revenue in the general fund are the grocery receipts tax. This is a major source of municipal revenues and together with a locally imposed municipal grocery receipts tax, makes up over 70% of total general fund revenues. Statewide, a 5% grocery receipts tax is collected and 1.225 is returned to municipalities in which the tax was collected. The 1.225 distribution is a newer, the local grocery receipts tax previously imposed by municipalities, but subsequently converted to state distribution. We also have gasoline tax, motor vehicles, we have a plethora of different sources of revenue. There are two, there are just, uh, major sources, the others are, are important, but they don't, um, compare. If we go to the second page, under municipal revenues, mandatory local imposition, we do charge business registration fees, uh, collection fees, municipal court fines, but those are minimum compared to the grocery receipts. Our second register source are municipal revenues, the optional local imposition. These you have to have ordinances for, which we do have in place, one would be the PD grocery receipts for safety. We use that fund a lot to fund officers or any safety equipment. Uh, again, and we have all these ordinances, Angela can access them, I also have them for you if you have any questions on what we have. Each one of these has a different percentage of 1% that you can use or you can have an But that is our second class source of revenue. As you go through here, you're going to see there's, like I said, a plethora of them. The last page has state grants alone, because we use a lot of. Um, Tracy, our head coordinator is really good about going out and finding resources for us. And also federal grants, with, I believe USDA is a federal grant, which helps fund most of our capital projects. Somebody have any questions on that? If you're wondering, the city currently imposes 1.6875% of municipal grocery receipts tax local option, and with different ordinances throughout there. Next in your notebook, after the cover page, there is a table of contents, I put a T on your tab. You might want to pull that out of your notebook so you can kind of go along and see where you are in the process. I'm not going to go through out every handout, some is in mid-year, some is in a four-year comparison, some is a two-year. I'm going to go through what I think is going to help you see the most information. But again, if you have questions, please feel free to. We're going to review the revenues for our funds first. Then we will review expenditures for our funds, specifically the general funds, highlight them, a thorough review of a two-year comparison of expenditures. Our major sources of expenditures and income are the general funds and our enterprise funds. So we have a lot of special revenues, we have capital revenues. Burnout is what we're going to operate with the day-to-day business for the city. So I'm really going to focus on the general funds and enterprise funds. Please note, I have listed all of the funds that we have for your review. Okay, so now we're going to look at handout number one. And these are also only agenda packets, so if you're going to want to, if I were to look at it, you can follow along. First started, we do review revenue funds for our funds first, and then actually pull out some of the other handouts so that we can review them at the same time. So if you will go to that number first. I don't have a fourth one. You don't? No, I got it. That's my answer. There are those graphs to help show you the revenue sources that I stated, which ones are our highest and which ones are important, but not our highest. Now I'll turn back to handout number four, and I'm sorry to jump you around, but you have to follow along, we'll get through it. This report has a four-year comparison of actual revenue. So when Mr. Madrid and I were looking at this, we're going, where's the, this revenue? Where's this revenue? Remember, this is actual revenue from July through December. Some of our other revenue sources come in after December or at different times, like small cities assistance comes in later in this year, not by December. If you look to the left of the report, this fund, this report is broken down by funds. As in 101 is our general funds, our 500 are our enterprise funds, 200 the same mention of special revenues. For the general fund revenues, I apologize when words like "so far" this are, I'm looking going, well, that makes, uh, I'm sorry, I can't express it. This will give you an idea of where our main revenue sources are, and they're on the top two that I mentioned. Grocery receipts tax, the municipal state distribution, and grocery receipts tax for the grocery receipts local option. If you look at the first chart, which is handout number four, it has a blue line and a red line. The numbers on the bottom near what's in this report will give you an idea of over the four years' time where the revenues have gone. You'll notice on the grocery receipts tax, the municipal state, it had a very small dip between 2017, 18, but it hasn't increased significantly over the next four years. Between 19 and 20, it increased $144,125. I truly expected our grocery receipts revenue to drop because there are three months, they collected and then three months later we get it. So we have plenty of time to have the impact of COVID hit us. So our estimate is matured, and why is it not dropped? I expected that. And this is because we are in a nonelastic economy here in T R C. We don't have huge manufacturing, we don't have a lot of huge business opportunities. So when other cities like Albuquerque are having these huge fluctuations, they're kind of steady, which is a good thing. The bad part of that is when everybody else is reeling in here, we're kind of steady. So that's just something to think about. But again, I was surprised that we didn't have a drop in revenues, pleased, but surprised. Our local option, as you can see, has just increased over the years. Um, I was kind of curious as to why that was as well, to not know, you know, the city as well or the sources of revenue. So when we have large construction projects or our water lines, any of those, it increases our local option grocery receipts because we charge a percentage of grocery receipts for that stuff. Some of the things we had going on, and you guys don't know as well as I do, um, going in 17 and 18 was they did a wastewater treatment plant based two ways. We had an animal shelter construction, a veterans wall construction, the municipal DOT Bradley sidewalk project. We had the airport fuel farm, one and two, and hospital construction. So all of those things that we see going on in our local community are contributing to our grocery receipts. to our gross receipts. So, but now we don't have any huge projects going. Tracy and Jesse and I all have a lot of stuff in the works, so again, we'll see our gross receipts pull up a little bit, which will be good. These gross receipts revenue are what help us pay our salaries and benefits for people in the general fund, the administrative support, my entire department, and support for other departments, our maintenance department, those funds that depend on the general revenue for their programs. On the next page, or the next chart, giving us the our other revenue sources. These aren't all of them, but they're just the gross receipts. We pay a direct flow through to our hospital, which is part of an ordinance. So that goes back into our fund, we just forward it on to the hospital. We have infrastructure, we have property current year or property tax. We also do get benefits from property tax. Franchise tax, motor vehicle registration tax. Those are just some of the revenues that go into the general fund. You'll notice the hospital has increased, the infrastructure has increased, property tax current year has kind of stayed flat, and revenue's a little bit of growth, a little bit falling, and flat. And we'll also notice, back on the line five, there's a gross receipts, HB, which is House Bill Six. This is a temporary disbursement from the state. They have decided not to charge the three percent administrative fee on some of our gross receipts. This is how they're refunding it back to us. And this is just going to be until 2020, 21, so it's a temporary breakthrough, you know, of course, we just put it into the general fund and use it as we need it. That came in 2019, in 2020, the increase is because they're catching up for the month that they weren't able to pay us, or disperse it to us in 2019. In red, you'll see the one-pointed gross receipts tax for the police department. One of the businesses in our budget process, that used to be to collect all those funds in the general fund, and at the end of the year, fed out to the PD gross receipts. Now, I talked to Mr. Madrid, and he really made it, that we need to put that money directly in for the benefit of the PD gross receipts, so they have that money access at all times, rather than losing at the end of the year. Did you have questions? All right. So I've just moved, not really moved the revenue, I moved the numbers, which on 296, so you can compare those over time. You'll see, we have a larger tax.
Say that one more time, please. What did you say?
I didn't physically move the revenue, I just moved the numbers, so we can compare what the trend has been.
And you're talking about 296?
Yes, yes, for the PD gross receipts.
Okay, so does that have something to do with the fingerprints, why they've dropped?
No, yeah, it doesn't.
Because we haven't been doing them.
The PD gross receipts is for safety. That was an ordinance that was put in place for safety, progress. So no, they do not have anything to do with each other. And with the next, the potential grant, you'll notice on the bottom, it grows from year to year. It depends on the grant. We don't always get a grant as a mission, we either believe you can have a grant, so. And a lot of times, and like in 2020, it's revenue that was due to us in 2011. I want to bring your attention on H2 to 0, which is about the six-point down of animal pound fees. You'll notice a huge increase in merit, for several reasons. Urban, you can probably tell me this, is I believe that we didn't have an animal shelter at one time, and then we moved it. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that would make sense. We started providing services, collecting fees. We also have agreements with the city of benefit group in Williamsburg, they can reach that address for our services.
What happened to that? Mr. Madrid discovered the fact that they moved money from GI2, they moved money from GI2, the animal shelter, and they're going to return it back to PD.
I believe we're paying it back every time.
Paying it back.
Yes, we are. Each year we pay it back. This year they'll have the fire news convention going forward, we are just going to directly put that money into.
And that was started last year, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, yes. Well, Mr. Madrid, come on. Come on, they started to show up. Mr. Madrid, did you want to add to that?
No, I think if somebody, it was appropriation, it should have been done for last time, and it's collected, it's collected.
Okay. We can still wake up there.
You're here, still alive.
All right. If you want to look at the total revenue, we have the general funds, for December's, this is this December, I'll look at that number on a separate part, because I'm thinking it's got to be more than, again, it's for the last few of December. We had a small decrease in 2018, but 19 and 2020, we have increased significantly. Again, I'm trying to move out funds that should not be gone through the general fund. We have a lot of projects that we charge to the general fund, get reimbursement fund, not going to get us moved out of the general fund, so we don't over-inflate our numbers. We want to have true actual numbers. What are we really generating for our general funds? And we'll see that probably next year, we're going to be able to do that. Okay. The two hundred funds, as I mentioned, are special revenue funds. They have a specific purpose, that's our 201 corrections fund, we have a state fire fund, Rogers Tax. Page three, I want to show you, I did make an error, it's not 204 municipal streets, it's 206. That probably doesn't have any significance to anybody but me in here. But you will notice in the street funds, there's varies too, on how much money they get through state grants, or rent funds. Sometimes it's thirty thousand, sometimes it's sixty thousand, all depending on the project and how much our proceeds are. And page three, you'll see again, we have the 296 Police Department Gross Receipts Tax Fund. Again, that money was naturally deposited into that fund, it was moved later, except for 2020, it was going directly into the fund. What I would like to do is take you to the enterprise fund, I may be good on page eight. Most of our enterprise funds are staffs to stay. They generate their own revenues and services provided, and they also support the general funds, as you know. We do have a few, I would say the cemetery fund, we have the gas fund, the effort fund, we do have to support those with general fund revenues. They are just not large enough to bring in our own revenues. What I'd like to do is take you to the 503 Electric Fund. The utility services, you'll notice have increased over the years, a steady increase, which is a good thing. This fund does not have an annual five percent increase in fees. I talked about that a little bit, and I'm not sure why that fund doesn't, because all of the other general enterprise funds do, such as our wastewater, our sewage. This is probably the same thing, okay?
Did we give you an answer on why it doesn't increase?
We just have an implemented one. So I do, I believe with the water fund recently, because we've not been increasing our waste overturn, we won't going to be eligible for some funding, so we had to look at doing that. Is that correct, Mr. Madrid? Okay, you're going off topic.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Our next fund would be the water fund, 504. Again, their utility services have increased over time. I did notice that our new installations have decreased from one year to the next. I did ask Jesse about that. And of course, at one time, we had the Persian Street Apartments, townhouses on Morgan, so we don't have those new projects going on, but he did let me know that we have a Sierra County building that will have new hookups, and going forward, that should increase that revenue. So it stands to reason, if you don't have new services, you're not going to have revenues to match that. Our solid waste fund, 505. Just so you know, the 505 and the 507 Solid Waste Transfer Station were combined in 2019. So the 507 Waste Transfer Station, no longer exists, it's just combined with the Solid Waste Department. If you look at their transfer station revenues, and you compare the landfill revenues on the 507, you'll see an upward trend in those revenues, as well as the utility services, continued upward trend in there. Again, very infime in a five percent, pardon me, every year. Our 506 Wastewater Treatment Court, they have had an increase in their revenues, they implemented five percent increase as well, and their installations are down for the same reason. With the municipal airport fund, which is 509, that kind of comes and goes. I've noticed that the revenue for fuel and OD gas sales have dropped significantly, but I look at their expenditures, well, their expenses for fuel and OD gas have dropped as well. So we're not buying the volume we used to, we're not selling the volume we used to. Of course, travel has been limited, and now the station, standing with the fuel fund has been down for a couple of days, off and on, and so that is probably part of it too. But it just stands to reason, if people are not traveling like they used to at this time. And I skipped running the golf course, and I apologize. In 2019, before that, we had a contractor running the golf course. Then we had taken over the golf course, we drove in revenue as slowly as we go. So the income fees, the miscellaneous charges that they have, the people that want memberships, I think those have dropped a little bit too, because we've got our snowboards coming in this year. It all kind of relates back to the present situation that we're in at the moment, and we're hoping one of those revenues do increase, but right now, the general fund is supporting the golf course. Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam America, the expansion and improvement fees for the golf course, where are those collected from? The fourth line.
I believe, you know, I'm going to have to get back on, Mr. Madrid, do you have the answer to that, the expansion fees?
Yes, those are one dollar for each round, is collected whenever a golfer chooses to play, and it's set aside for improvements, and those are expended based on recognition of the golf course advisory board, the golf course improvements.
Thank you. If that answers your question.
Correct. So the miscellaneous income is from?
Deputy fees for sessions, training sessions. That part provides.
That says fourteen hundred and eighty-four rounds of golf were played at the golf course, then.
I wouldn't say that exactly.
That's what this number says.
Okay. We can go back to that for maybe fifty dollars. Okay. So now we'll go back to, there is a comparison between 19 and 20 for a mere full analysis of revenues, if you wanted to look at that. That's in your handout playground, just to compare 2019 to 2020, but I wanted to give you a good overview of the revenues. So now I'm going to go ahead and move on to expenditures, if you will please see handout number two. These are expenditures for our funds, and I want to let you know, for the general funds, it's broken down by department, rather than overall expenses. So that's what I'm going to give you a true picture of our expenses for salaries, benefits, and such. So I've got that later on in the presentation. So if you want to look for the general funds, overall expenses, that is on page 14. That lift home, it says, is two point five million. For seventeen, between seventeen and eighteen, our expenditures dropped a little bit.
Your entry is not valid.
Thank you. And of course, our expenses have increased over time. We have implemented several different expenses, salary increases, it depends on the department, but this is all for the general fund, so just to kind of give you an idea of that. Again, it's not broken down by expense, it's by department by expense. One of the things I would try to get compared for, yes?
Excuse me, I have a message that they can't hear the phone, I'm speaking very well, so. I was fifteen, twenty minutes ago, I'm not fifteen now.
Oh, okay. All right. We're ready to compile some of the flood costs that we have improved, but at this time, we're still getting drenched out of. From each department, I know that we're going to try to make a reimbursement in hope of what some pounds we leave for those funds. At this time, we don't have total expenditures, so most of it will be provided to some back to you at another time. Okay, so turn to page 23 on this expenditure report. This will give you a better breakdown of the expenses for utilities and enterprise funds. This will give you an idea of the wages and benefits utilities and wholesale power costs. Each department has a little bit of different expenditure costs, most of them only have salaries and benefits. Most of the enterprise funds salary and benefit are the highest cost, the utility department is a little bit different. The first one is the cemetery, that's a minimal part of our budget, so we'll get 502 utility pool. They do have some larger expenditures, which is their salaries and benefits. I apologize for the cemetery. Okay. So this is handout number seven, if you will please pull that out. And what I wanted to come in is, to give you an idea of the higher expenditures for the general fund. Does anybody have that one? Hasn't most seven-minute entities and probably private and basic to some private industries, because I haven't worked on that yet. Salaries and benefits are generally the highest expense. For the general fund, you'll notice it's, you know, from seventy-two percent all the way up to eighty-six percent from seventeen, eighteen, to twenty and twenty-one. Now, right now, we've had some positions in our general fund that haven't been filled. I know the facilities department has the position of Pacific Center, we haven't filled yet, because we don't have that many. Sometimes we just can't find the staff that we need to fill those positions. At general, we have other contractual services that would be like an IT contract, or a contract with a contractor vendor, that type of thing. Professional audit labor services, that's a high expenditure within the general funds. And our general property, we have our liability insurance, that's a high expenditure as well. But you'll see that salaries and benefits are all the biggest spending expense. Do you have any questions on that? If you would go to handout number six. This is the general fund, two-year actual expenditure comparison from nineteen and twenty by department. So whenever we say salaries and benefits are the highest expenditure, that may not be true for every department, but it is true for most departments. Some permanent expenses that have had either an increase or a decrease are unemployment insurance. When I came, I discovered we hadn't paid that in several years, so in nineteen, twenty, we had a rather high unemployment bill that we had to pay. For twenty, twenty-one, I haven't received that bill yet, so we haven't paid that bill yet. In the prior years, software licenses were included with subscriptions and dues. Moving forward with our new charge accounts, which breaks down our expenditure in a little more detail, software license will show a higher cost, subscriptions and dues will show a lower cost, because we've moved that cost out. moved that cost out. You'll notice the first department is the governing body. The highest expenditure or the increase for this fiscal year in cost is attorney's fees. We've moved attorney's fees from the city manager's budget to the governing body according to the chart of accounts for the Department of Finance. That's where the expense should be, because it is an expense at the board, not necessarily just the city manager. The next one is the city clerk. You will notice that they had a small decrease in wages. It's because they've had a position that hasn't been filled for a while, but they have recently filled that. The municipal clerk, one of their highest expenses is full-time wages. They had had a small increase in wages for this year. If I'm going too fast, too slow, just let me know. Um, the municipal clerk, I already went over that first. And the city managers, they have had a decrease in, um, to career and phone trading, which for the obvious reasons, we're not traveling for training anymore. So unless something really significant sticks out, I'm not gonna go over long by long unless you have a question on it. Professional services, that's where we used to charge the employee fees. Again, we have moved those out to charge to the governing board. You'll notice on page five, animal shelter doesn't have a comparison for two thousand nineteen. It's because it used to be combined with animal control. We have separated those two departments and their budgets for this year. So the animal shelter doesn't have any comparison, whereas the animal control will have significant decreases because we've moved our expenses out. The police department, their full-time wages have gone up a little bit. It's because they've been able to fill some positions, and if sometimes they're not able to fill those positions. An increase in wages, we did have a dollar increase for, for the police department. Comes out of the PD growth receipts, not out of the general fund. That's what that's like to be said. Parks and recreation, on page seven, the department went down a lot. They were able to hire some additional seasonal workers to help complete the, the Rockwood's Park. Also, the municipal flood control. I think one of their departments was one of the hardest to equip. My understanding was some that we had seen somewhere else, we went onto the fields and they had to work and try to get that taken care of. Page, um, page eight, the department ten to community development. You'll notice on page nine, where host continues professional services. This is one of those budgets I told you that we expense projects out of, we're getting reimbursed, we're trying to move out of those capital projects into a different fund so it doesn't overinflate our expenses and revenue in the general fund. Right now, she has had a significant increase in expenses from last year, uh, but it is because we have the preliminary engineering reports for certain projects within her budget.
Yeah.
Listen.
Go back if you don't mind, to, uh, building inspector, uh, project.
Yes.
Full-time wages, building inspector.
Okay.
Where's, where's that?
We don't have a building inspector at the time. So what's happened within our chart of accounts, uh, Timmy coming on, they really, uh, tried to define rather than just full-time wages, they were putting building inspector, and we just haven't updated our chart of accounts. So as you may or may not remember when we started our budget process this year, we've tried to convert to the Department of Finance's chart of accounts. We just haven't gotten there yet. It's just a time. So we don't have a building inspector, that would be for the community development grants person.
So that three hundred and twenty, uh, grant of professional services, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sir?
That, that is for the preliminary engineering reports, some of their projects that I'm trying to get moved out of and corrected out of the general fund and to capitalize.
Thank you.
Do that. Any other questions on that? I just look so excited, I can't brush my mouth from this. I apologize. But I wanna give you a full understanding and a, and a big idea of where we're going. So what I'm about to do now. Okay, so let's look at general fund number one. I promise you a good sense of getting the end. There's a handout number nine and a handout number ten. This is for enterprise funds. I'm just gonna go over number nine with you, because it doesn't give you a variance and a percentage variance, but I want you to see the big differences in what departments incur which expenses. Okay? Cemetery fund, let me review whether there's a lot of activity, but I'm trying to provide you an analysis between one year and the next for each department. So the first department we're gonna look at is the five oh two utility office. Okay, the utility office is where we do our billing, we collect payments, they are our two accounts receivable through there. It doesn't generate its own revenues, but it does support the missing cash from the other enterprise funds, which serves to reason, go there to bill and collect for the other utilities. Okay? Their highest expense at seventy-four point five hundred percent is sixty-nine point six with salaries and benefits. Okay, which kind of makes sense. All right, their next highest expense, and I highlighted these in yellow, if the numbers inside them, um, for nineteen, it was postage. And the third highest expense was subscriptions and dues, which we know they were also charging us software in prior years. The next year, they're at salaries and benefits, but then postage is third, and subscriptions and dues are second. So it all depends on what they buy and the timing of the payments. We may get billed in December but not pay until January. So this is actual payments cash out the door. So the word analysis will happen at the end of the year, which will tell me what do we spend most of our money, but this is just a sniff of time. Okay? The next department I'm gonna look at you is, um, five oh three, which is the electric department. The electric department generates its own revenues and also supports the general fund and the utility office too. Okay? In nineteen twenty, the largest expense here is wholesale power. And I asked those, so I had a clear indication for you, what does wholesale power mean? Okay, so they tell me we buy power from Sierra Electric, Rafa, and Southern Farm. The power that we get from Sierra Electric and Rafa comes to us through tri-state power lines. The power we get, our wholesale, is for our substation, it drops the voltage to seventeen to seventy-two thousand to our power lines. So the first department salaries and benefits don't need to compare to what we pay for the wholesale power because we don't generate our own, we buy it from others. And then, the second highest expenditure, gross receipts tax. We try to repay gross receipts on the wholesale power that we purchase. And, salary and benefits. So you'll see from nineteen twenty to twenty, well, nineteen to twenty, that changed, wholesale power is still the topic expenditure for the utility department.
Right here, a question. You said we pay gross receipts on the electricity we purchased?
And then we pay, that we collect gross receipts on the electricity we charge to customers and we still leave that on. So we collect gross receipts from the customers and then we pay it off.
Okay, all right, that's it. Sorry, back down. We don't pay it on.
I was, yeah.
That's not what, I need to ask you that, sorry.
All right, so this is the department for water department. Again, those are salaries and benefits with about thirty-three to thirty-seven percent of their budgets. They pay their own utilities. Each, each enterprise pays their own utilities. So the general fund only pays for certain things, uh, parts, and they pay for their own. Um, field supplies, that changes from year to year. I happen to know this year that they had to restock a lot of their supplies so they could have those available to them when they go out in the field to work. The winter insurance, sometimes that are one of the higher expenses. It depends on the, the total budget of the department. Um, solid waste, their highest expense of persons, salaries and benefits. Waste is frozen, the lower highest cost to bear, gross receipts tax, and utilities. Other six, less, waste down a tree root here, and gross salaries and benefits are one of their highest costs, regular clothing maintenance. Software licenses, um, it's not just for their, I'm just gonna back right out of that, sorry about that. Um, field supplies, you'll notice that in nineteen, they pay ten thousand one hundred twenty-seven, and in twenty, they pay eighty-eight thousand nine thirty-two. Again, they're having to restock a lot of the supplies that they had to use through the year. The golf course, salaries and benefits are close to their highest expense. The summer will be for the airport. This is where I noticed that their fuel cells, their jet fuel and their OD gas that they purchase has dropped significantly, which it makes sense why the revenue has dropped significantly, is because we just don't have the traffic queue that we used to.
Madam, haven't we been short, uh, director there? Why is wages up if we've been without an airport manager?
I thought they were a lot better.
Uh-uh, no.
The whole July through December, it's not been there. Uh, we've also had to pay standby wages for those employees where they're filling in now an extra day. So we have two employees out there who are putting in more time.
Okay, thank you.
Goodness.
Standby wages are down, actually, yeah.
Well.
No, they're up.
Wages are up. Okay, so that is pretty much the presentation I have for you. I hope it answers your questions. You're worried today. Um, from here on out, I will probably just present two years, two that have to go through four years at a time. Is that sufficient for you? So I would say like, oh, expenses?
I love that.
Okay. We do have to refer to the Department of Finance, that the last day that we fired the coast for January is, uh, we can't laugh, Karen is working on it. So we do send a closing report to the Department of Finance. My understanding is we don't bring that to you the other time you've filled the full purchases at the end of the year during the budget time. That we will just present it to you on a regular basis. Is there anything else that you would like to see? Leave to me.
I don't know, but the way you presented, are there any other suggestions from the other commissioners on what you wanna see and what can be done?
Thank you very much, you.
Here, this is Boris.
Boris, come here.
Yeah, um, this is, I just want to, uh, highlight a couple of things. As you can see, uh, our financial position is very solid and is even better. Uh, while most communities in the state right now are struggling through COVID, we are not. The numbers that we see are even without the universal that we, that will be the best thing ending for the disaster that we had in July. So, uh, our worst case looks a lot better than some death cases in the state. And this is, uh, the chief of town and his staff. They have endured COVID. They have had, um, people retired, and dying, and even, even pass away sadly. And they have endured, and, uh, they continue to do great work. DFA is nothing but complimentary regarding our financial reporting and budget calculation. And I just wanna thank Carol and her staff on looking for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too would like to echo that. Um, I think Carol has done a fabulous job along with Mr., with Manager Madrid. Um, you know, again, I have to, uh, iterate that when Manager Madrid came on, we, we did not have a finance director, and he put together the budget. Not only was he more apt being, uh, the city manager in our community, our municipality, but he put together a, a great budget. And I know that he's been a backbone for Carol, and they've worked very good together. And I think they've done a fabulous job as a team. And also with Karen, um, you know, she's been there a long time, and, and, and she's good at what she does. And, and thank you to all of you. All right, um, so I need a, do we need a motion?
Just an update.
Just an update, okay. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item G, ordinances, resolution zoning, uh, G one, discussion action, resolution number twenty-nine, twenty-one, budget adjustment, City Manager Madrid.
The mismanagement is a required, uh, procedure by the Department of Finance's administration for funds that were not included in the original budget. This is to incorporate funds that have been procedures appropriated subsequent to that. And we are fairly routine, all
I apologize, I don't have that in front of me. Um, I do know that we have, you know, requesting an increase for our J-Jack through the Children's and Families Department Grant. We are waiting on a final contract on that. And I believe the other one was for the senior grants. They need to purchase.
An ice machine.
An ice machine, thank you. An ice machine and also have a secret virus installed.
I don't see the J-Jack increase in that.
For the eighty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, yeah, increase in the J-Jack break.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right, trigger. Questions from the?
So we approved, the only change that we're, that we're, they did ask for five thousand seven hundred fifty-six, but nine hundred sixty-four hundred, the senior grant for the ice machines. The senior grant is eleven thousand four hundred in revenue and eleven thousand four hundred in expenditures. That's the, uh, adjustment and increase. And then the adjustment increase in the senior grant is, uh, excuse me, in the J-Jack is eighty thousand two hundred and seventy-nine.
So those are the only two adjustments that we have at this time, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I was trying to find my page. Um, what, where's the income for the J-Jack? That's their grant?
Yes.
And then the senior grant is coming out of the general fund for us to help them buy that ice machine?
No, it comes from the senior grant fund.
Where does the money for that fund come from?
That comes from the Department of Agent and Law Team Citizen.
Okay, so we're just the fiscal agent for that?
No, I guess. Manager Madrid, so we're just the fiscal agent for that, right? That money comes to us and then we extend it, correct?
Yes, we administer for them. That's great.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Mayor, make a motion to show the budget of this one.
Mr. First, Joe Sucker.
Uh, the motion made by Commissioner Luna and a second by Mayor Phil Timm Forester to approve the budget adjustments as noted by Manager Madrid and Carol Perpatrick, our finance director. Are there any questions?
You actually approved the resolution, uh?
Correct. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Approving resolution number, um, twenty-nine, twenty-one, budget adjustment as noted by Manager Madrid and Finance Director Carol Perpatrick. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Madam clerk, would you please forward? Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lorna?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Mama Foster?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item G two, discussion action, resolution number thirty, twenty twenty-one, water system assess, uh, asset management plan, Tracy Alvarez and Manager Madrid.
Hello, Tracy. Thanks, we're Mr. Madrid, Mayor, Mayor Pat Timm, Commissioner. Uh, this is similar to what we just brought to you previously, um, the wastewater system asset management plan. Uh, for the water system asset management plan, we had one in place in two thousand fourteen. Uh, it was updated again in two thousand seventeen. Various funding sources that we applied for do require our asset management plan be updated every one to five years depending on the funding source. Uh, we are in process of, uh, doing our grant applications through Coronias Water Trust Board, drinking water. So we need to update this so we're eligible for funding application. Um, adopting the resolution means the commission is committing to the development and implementation of the plan. Uh, we would bring that completed plan, uh, would be available to the commission once it's completely updated. And then you would be dedicating an asset management steering committee, which, uh, our suggestion would consist of our city manager. Um, it says wastewater director in the form that I submitted. I do apologize, I shouldn't have brought a wastewater director. I do apologize, I shouldn't have brought a wastewater director or his designee, uh, the finance director and their designee and the grant coordinator or designee and the engineer. Um, I do have our engineer, Will Smith, company, uh, who we procured to do the water system asset management plan, who is also on the line if commissioners have any questions. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy Alvarez. Any questions from the commission regarding the asset management plan? I don't see any questions.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one, approving the water system asset management plan.
Motion for justice, sir.
Uh, the motion by Commissioner Luna and a second by Mayor Phil Tim Forster for the approval of resolution number thirty, twenty, twenty-one, the water app, approving the water, uh, water system asset management plan as noted by Tracy Alvarez. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Madam clerk, would you please call over? Honorable Ramon Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lina?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item H, reports. Manager Madrid, do you have a report at this time?
I have a couple of these items, ma'am commissioners. Uh, Tracy and I had a real good meeting with, uh, council of government's representatives, uh, this past week, and we have a follow-up on schedule. Ongoing items including every possible funding, uh, opportunity within the state, uh, whether they're going to be for city, they do, and other projects. So those, those conditions are ongoing, and, and, uh, what we hope to achieve in that is, uh, collaboration of everyone that's within the area of the COG. So those have been real good discussions and, and hopefully, uh, they'll result in some extra funding. Uh, if not, we, uh, we stay informed in, in various areas too, such as, uh, legislative priorities and things like that. And these will be ongoing meetings from now on. Uh, I want to point that we did have an issue regarding the Main Street funding that had been discussed before, the two hundred thousand dollars. We received that, uh, drafted that agreement on December the twenty-second from, uh, Main Street, uh, that was between, uh, the, the, between the city and, and the transportation. And when we did the agreement, um, there was a few flaws in it that were not, that were leaving the, uh, we should, we didn't see it during the chase. Uh, the one thing that was a major issue was the termination date was set to be, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And, um, I have never seen a case where any capital project was going to be funded, they designed, completed, and, uh, closed out within five months. So we did reach out to the Department of Transportation, they agreed that that was too short a timeline. They obtained approval for, uh, changing that date in June thirtieth, April twenty-two. They have submitted that agreement to our district representative, and we have, uh, a meeting, uh, scheduled early next week to finalize that agreement. So that part, we'll proceed forward, and those checks have been ironed out. Uh, the other thing that I did want to mention, and we, uh, advertising when I, uh, placed the page in the HPL website, is, uh, we've been trying to, we want to get tested, and of course, be smart when it comes to social distancing and all that stuff and things like that. Uh, the mission that we want to do, we want to make available the information for the vaccination, the hotline. That number is eight-five-five-six-zero-zero-three-four-five-three. This is for people that don't have access to the internet and can't register for the vaccine that way. And it's, it's totally a personal choice, realize that, and we will be advertising this number when it's been publicly promoted, once you're vaccinated, as we try and push forward to, uh, COVID again. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. I do have one question. Um, in regards to the two hundred thousand dollars from, uh, D.O., uh, Department of Transportation, we will, uh, get that resolution on, uh, one of our agendas as soon as we can, correct? Regarding that Main Street project?
Yes, the resolution related to be, uh, drafted so that it is in general support of the entire project, not just for the two hundred thousand, but for any other, uh, funding opportunities that make the mark.
Okay, because I do know...
It will be on the next agenda.
Okay, because I do know that this has been a long time coming, and so I would like to get that done as quick as possible. Thank you, Manager Madrid.
It will be on our next meeting, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Attorney Rubin, do you have a report at this time?
No, I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Barker, do you have a report at this time?
I do not, ma'am.
Mayor Phil Tim?
I do not.
Commissioner Luna?
Nothing.
Commissioner Ergon?
No.
No, you perled? What's wrong with you?
I've got a little issue with that.
No, I'm just joking, I just, I'm just pulling your leg. And of course, the only thing that I would like to say is that I do know that our little, uh, Myimerco seven, um, coffee shop had their grand opening this past weekend. Um, I'm really excited to see that little business going. Um, I see a lot of good things happening for them on Facebook. They do have wonderful coffee. And so please, please, I ask everyone to get out and support our little businesses and our community. They really, really need us at this time. Um, again, uh, if you haven't had a COVID test, please get out and, and do that. Um, it only takes a few seconds, and if you haven't signed up for your shop, please do that also. That's all I have. Um, the next item on our agenda was executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executives under limited personnel matters pursuant to ten fifteen one H two? So moved. Second. Madam clerk, would you please call over? Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lina?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now go into executive session, does anyone else need a break before we do?